Good evening. I'm going to call this session to order. The meeting will be called to order at 7:18 a.m. Please rise, and the clerk will lead us in the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In normal times, we would have met at the, in the library, but with COVID, we've had to move to the auditorium so we have more space. And with that comes some challenges. We've, you know, we've had some technical issues today, but which is highly unusual. I mean, David Renner and Jason Fleming do a great job setting this up because it's not just what the microphones and the speakers and the projection, it's also the live feed. But once in a while, things just don't go our way, so we're, we were a little bit delayed. But again, thank you so much to Dave and Jason for keeping everything going and figuring out how to make this work for us this evening. So we would like to have the board approve the October 20th agenda as submitted. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Seven in favor and none opposed. A motion would be in order to approve the consent agenda, which includes the approval of minutes of October 6th, 2020, the acceptance of recommendations of the committee for special education, acceptance of recommendations from the committee on preschool, special education, and the acceptance of recommendation from the superintendent on personnel changes. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Our motion carries. Which brings us to special reports. And we have, I'd like to invite Mr. Ray Wagner down to discuss the audit report for us. It's good to see you again, Ray.
Sounds like we're on. Good evening.
Good evening.
It's my pleasure to be here tonight, under these little different circumstances. I want to make sure that I'm projecting okay because I, you know, this is, this is all a little different. If you can't hear me, let me know because I can usually project even without the speaker, so I want to make sure you're okay. It's interesting, I've done a few of these presentations, and you know that the one thing that, that I haven't got used to is that you lose the expression. And, and then the last one I did, someone said, "Thank you," and I looked around, I had no idea who said that. But we're going to get through this. I think, hopefully, we've turned the corner. All right, your financial position, the audit is done, everything is finalized, it's all ready to go to the state. A few comments. Last week, we had a very good detailed meeting with the audit committee where we went over in, in a lot of detail as far as your financial situation and your different funds, and then the management letter that has a couple items in it also. But what I'm going to do is just give you a very, very high level overview. The bottom line is you continue to be in very, very good financial condition, right? You've been in financial condition and good, good shape for many years, and you continue. This past year, obviously, there was a lot of things going on in the last quarter of the year, but there were a lot of things that affected your financial condition, but for the most part, you ended up with just a little more surplus than you did a year before. But that kind of makes sense because you had, you know, some reduction in expenditures towards the last quarter. So you ended up, actually, the budget generated about $10 million of surplus, right? And what you've done is you've allocated that money to the different reserves, which certainly makes a lot of sense in today's environment, and the reserves are going to be there when you need them. And obviously, the next couple of years, who knows, you know, what the finances are going to be of the state. But where you are at the end of the year, you have about $13 million in various reserves that, in one way or another, from, with you folks approving using some of these reserves, they will be there to help your budget. You have about 24 mil, or 26 million, I believe, in your capital reserve. That's where your majority of, of your money is. So you have about $39 million on your balance sheet and reserves. So that certainly positions you very well going forward, that you will be able to absorb some of the, some of the things that you're going to have to deal with going forward. So again, your budget came out very well, your reserves are in very, very good condition. Obviously, if you're going to need reserves, the business office will be providing you information if and when that, that happens. At this point, I don't believe you've identified reserves yet to help this, this new budget. Maybe you have at the end of the year, you're, you're allocating about $2 million of fund balance to help support the budget. But going forward, you will be similar to pretty much everybody else, that you probably will be using and needing some, some reserve monies for unanticipated expenditures. So, so you are in good shape there. Your other funds are okay, there's no particular problem in, in your other areas. You were able to transfer some money to the school lunch to kind of make them whole, which was fine. You still have money in the capital reserve, or in the capital fund, too. You have money that is, has not been spent in the capital fund. So overall, your, your finances, your books are in good shape. The management letter, the recommendations are very minor, we only had a couple minor recommendations, and already your, your business office has provided you with a summary of the corrective action, which certainly is a good idea, and the state says you need to file that with Albany, so that you're on top of that. So overall, I know there's a lot of things that you're struggling with, but right now, your finances are excellent. Okay? So it's nice to hear some good news once in a while. Okay? So the thing, your challenge is to try and keep, keep ahead of the curve and manage, manage your funds the best you can, and obviously, you know, if you need, you need reserves, you'll be getting all the information possible as far as what you can and can't do with, with the dollars if, in fact, you need them. Okay. Is there any questions? Anything at all? Any, any detail, any?
The board, do you have any questions for Mr. Wagner? I do have one question, and I think it goes over here to Mr. Terriffel first, is have we drawn down from the capital reserves for exist, the current, the projects that are underway yet?
So for the 2018 and 2019 projects?
The ones, you're right, the Bay Trail.
Yep. So those projects were already previously funded. We did allocate a piece of year-end as a transfer to support those projects, but now we've just did the borrowing for those projects. So as of now, we're not utilizing any new capital reserve money to support ongoing projects.
I'm sorry.
Yep. The $25 million or so that Mr. Wagner just mentioned we have in capital reserves are mostly earmarked for the next capital project that we're planning for, hopefully, a community referendum next fall.
Okay. Great. Fantastic. And I think, again, thank you so much. Not only are you good at overseeing us and making sure we have things going well, you always offer great advice over the course of the audits. With this environment, it's good to have that.
Well, thank you so much, and, and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care. We all said thank you. Yeah.
And, one second. Which brings us to visitor speaking time. This is the designated time for district residents to bring their comments to the board. The board encourages residents to share their opinions, voice concerns, and offer suggestions in a constructive atmosphere. Matters involving particular individuals or specific negotiations are not permitted during public session and should be addressed privately with the board president or superintendent. Comments brought to the board will be taken under consideration, however, this is not a time when the board will answer questions and engage in dialogue. A request to speak, a request to speak form must be filled out prior to the start of the meeting and given to the district clerk. Speakers are expected to identify themselves with their name and address prior to presenting and limit their comments to five minutes or less. The board president reserves the right to limit the, the total amount of visitor speaking time based on the length of the agenda, and written communications, of course, are always encouraged. So do we have any speakers today? No. All right. Well, we again, if, for those watching in, we always, again, encourage you to send us your communication via email if you like. Now, it is the student time, and Abby Jockman, would you please provide your report and, and then preempt what Tom's going to say?
Okay. So to start things off, at Penfield High School, the grounds crew are still hard at work to prepare for spring sports, and the girls varsity soccer team participated in a recovery session and crossball, crossbar challenge to focus on breathing and being mentally locked in. At Bay Trail, in art class, students were drawing sneakers with a twist, I remember that art project, and seventh graders were reading The Outsiders and using text evidence to describe character traits. At Cobble's, staff were discussing how to promote student success and help students navigate the learning pit, which is a, the process of how a student takes in the information that they were taught. And at Indian Landing, Mrs. Jones's first grade, fifth grade class is learning about photosynthesis and ecosystems in science class. Mrs. McDermott's first grade, first grade class was practicing gross motor movements in P.E. by running, galloping, and jumping, and the bus drivers were surprised with cider and donuts as a way of saying thank you for what they do. At Scribner, students played soccer while staying socially distanced in P.E. And at Harris Hill, students had their socially distanced picture day on the 16th. And students also learned about the compass and cardinal directions through hands, through a hands-on lesson where they constructed their own mini compasses. And a group of students delivered presidents, delivered presents to their principal, Mr. Nelson. And finally, for district-wide news, the Empire State Maker Fair was held virtually on the 16th. There was a workshop on equity and building culturally responsive practices, and to celebrate and support October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, many schools encouraged their students to wear the color pink. And finally, Wednesday, October 21st, is Unity Day, and all students are encouraged to wear the color orange. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Abby. Any questions for Abby? All right. Thank you very much. Which brings us to superintendent's report. Tom?
Great. Abby, nice job.
Thank you.
So this evening for superintendent's reports, we do have some student and staff honors. I do have some Penfield Central School District updates around COVID, equity, and a couple other topics. And then I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Pfeiffer, who's going to give us a summary of superintendent's conference day that just took place here in our district. So first up is commended scholars, and I will let you know that I'm not going to read through everybody's name, and it's not because they are not fully deserving, but all names are in our agenda and we can take a look at. But the following PHS seniors have been named as commended scholars in the 2021 National Merit Scholarship Program. These students are recognized for placing among the top 50,000 scorers out of the more than 1.6 million students who took the PSAT and the NMSQT last year. So pretty, pretty fantastic, wonderful kids here, and very proud of them. On that topic is the time of year we talk about AP scholars, and so the following Penfield High School students, and it includes students who graduated in 2020 because the exams they took were last May, have been recognized as AP scholars for their outstanding results on AP examinations last spring. There are a number of categories, so we do have national AP scholars, students with an average of at least 4.0 on all AP exams and scores of four or higher on eight or more of those exams. Those names are there in your agenda. The other categories are AP scholar with distinction. This is 38 PHS students and graduates who earned an average score of at least 3.5 on all AP exams taken, and scores of three or higher on five or more of those exams. We have 16 PHS students and graduates who earned an average of at least 3.25 on all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on four or more of those exams. Those are the AP scholars with honor. And then AP scholar, 49 students and graduates who scored a three or higher on three or more AP exams. So just absolutely incredible students, and these exams, these AP exams, as you recall, were taken during school closures last year under the emergency closures of COVID. So they were all online assessments that had to be taken in a very different atmosphere. To shift, I just wanted to share before I show the next slide that I don't always speak openly about my favorite employee. I do have one favorite employee, I'm very excited he's coming back, it's my favorite four-legged employee that works for us. And so just for the community, I'd like to say thank you and welcome back to Simon. Simon is our therapy dog. He works very closely with our counselor at Indian Landing. I believe he drives her to work every day when he comes in. We started a couple of years ago, so thank you to the board and the policy committee who started reviewing three years ago the concept of allowing therapy dogs into our buildings. We do now have a policy. Two years ago, it was a pilot policy, it's now an official policy, and we do allow in circumstances where a mental health staff member has a certified therapy dog. There is a process that does involve a pretty thorough check. I actually speak to Simon's veterinarian once a year to clear him, that he got the clean bill of health and positive thumbs up, and he will be starting back. He took a little break with the interesting start to this school year, and we're very excited to have Simon back. So I'm telling you, I don't play favorites, but Simon is my favorite four-legged staff member that we have, so. And as you notice from the picture, also a Bills fan.
But, excuse me, I mean, how could you not have that be your favorite?
I, it's true.
I mean, just look at that face, right?
It's going to be, you know, if we do get another therapy dog, it's going to be kind of tough for me, but, but right now, Simon is the only one, so I can brag all about him and not feel bad.
Oh, he's wonderful.
Our students, I will just share with the community that student voices do matter in everything that we do, and a number of Indian Landing students actually wrote letters to me asking for Simon to come back and explaining why, really unprompted, although they were all on the same paper, so I think that maybe somebody put them up to it. But we do know the work, the board on board tours in the past have met Simon, seen him in action, and we're pretty excited. So thank you to the board for, again, that policy, and thank you to Indian Landing for being a great home for, for Simon. So I don't have, I do have seven favorite board members, and, and one favorite student rep to the board, and this is School Board Recognition Week, the, the week of October 19th to 23rd. So really, for the board and for our community, understand, this is a time to promote awareness of the important work performed by our board members as they guide our schools and promote a healthy culture in which to learn and work. Our board is currently facing unprecedented challenges of a pandemic while working closely with educators to prepare our students to learn. These individuals up here, including our student rep, are dedicated to the students, the staff, and community, and devote many hours of volunteer service as they strive for improvement, excellence, and progress in education, recognizing that all students can be successful. So just on, I know we have a small crowd, but if we could do a quick round of applause for our board, thank you today and every day that you appear for us.
Yeah, that mic'd up pretty well there. It sounded pretty loud.
Huge crowd. So I just, I really do say thank you, and from my heart and for people to know is, it is a reminder that while, while I, you know, collect a salary, while my team, who's here at meetings, are obviously employees, the board is fully volunteer, including our student rep. There are no stipends, there is no, no payment. It really is volunteer work. And this board, if you are attending PTA meetings, PAB meetings, you know that you see board members at all those events. Once we get back to, to normal, which is what we're always striving for, and we'll have events and concerts and all those, the board members are there. You know, they, they reside within our district and they support our district, but the amount of time this group puts forward is extraordinary, so thank you. So on behalf of the district, and a thank you, a small appreciation, the board, you may notice if you're watching at home, has a little gift, and, and it has a little saying. It's actually a little bowl of Tootsie Rolls, and it says, "Thanks for the important role you play each day." As you know, Nancy Bradstreet in the audience, our director of communication, is very firm on grammar, and that's why we have to use our quotation marks, because we know we're misspelling role, but it's because of the Tootsie Roll, I'd like to point that out. So thank you very much, and Abby, as well as the student rep, what you bring to the table is absolutely appreciated. On behalf of the district, too, you're the voice of the students coming here to the board, and on behalf of everybody, thank you. What we've done the last couple of years, and no different this year, is that instead of a gift, you get to bring the Tootsie Rolls in the bowl home, but, but instead of a gift that, that you can bring home, we have a gift that we'll keep on giving. And so each board member, including our student rep, will have a book dedicated in their honor to our school libraries, our middle school and elementary school libraries, and these, these books are for primary and secondary. As you may know, we're in a pandemic, and sometimes the mail doesn't come on time, so there's a little shipping delay in the books. So what the board has is a, is sort of a cardstock paper with the, the cover of each book. It is an area, every year, we pick an area and work with our librarians for them to select books, they are the experts in this field, and this year, we're looking at equity diversity, and so they selected two books, and I just want to talk about them because you don't have them in front of you to look at. But Class Act is about eighth grader Drew Ellis is no stranger to saying, "You have to work twice as hard to be just as good." His grandmother was reminded him of this his entire life. But what if he works 10 times as hard and still isn't afforded the same opportunities that his privileged classmates at Riverdale Academy Day School take for granted? As the pressures mount, will Drew find a way to bridge the divide so he and his friends can truly accept each other? And most important, will he finally be able to accept himself? So once we get these books in, we'll bring them to the board meeting so you can see them before they go to the library, and a card with your name will forever be in the book for when students take them out of the library. This book, Class Act, I just mentioned, is a sequel to the author Jerry Craft's first book called The New Kid. It's actually written in a graphic novel stance. He's one of the, one of the few African-American illustrators who writes in this style, and I can tell you, his, I haven't read this book, but his first book is awesome. So this will be in our libraries for students to take out, and we know that it will be in high demand. The, the next book I want to talk about is our elementary, sort of our primary book, and this is called Under My Hijab, and as, it's about a young girl observes six very different women in her life who each wear the hijab in a unique way. She also dreams of the rich possibilities of her own future and how she will express her own personality through her hijab. Under My Hijab honors the diverse lives of contemporary Muslim women and girls, their love for each other, and their pride in their culture and faith. I did have an opportunity to read this book, it's really nice, it's a wonderful, colors in the book, I, I think it'll be great for our elementary school students in, in just a great way. So your name, one of your names will be on that, and we'll be putting those into our elementary libraries as soon as they come in. So I just wanted to, again, say thank you to the school board for, for everything that you do. We, please know that I can, I, I am appreciative of that as a superintendent. I'm probably more appreciative of it as a parent in this district, knowing that we have a board who listens to people, wants the voice of, of all different stakeholders in our district, and, as difficult it is to say, nonstop pushes me to make sure that Penfield is as excellent as we can be. So thank you for that very much. I'm now going to shift gears. You can free to eat a Tootsie Roll during your next presentation. This is my point where I'm just going to give some updates, especially because we're in such a unique year. And so I have Kevin Marriott, a Spanish teacher from PHS, who's currently working on his administrative program, and made the terrible mistake of offering to help me. So before we start with this, I just want to give a little background, is that a couple, a few weeks ago, we sent surveys out to three key stakeholder groups about our instruct, current instructional program during the COVID pandemic. We sent an email to parents and guardians with the survey for them, a separate survey went to faculty, K-12, and a third survey went to students in grades four through 12. I just want to note, if you're interested, why didn't I send it to kindergarten through third grade? It's because there is something in our email system called DLs, or distribution lists, so I can click it, and it goes to the entire class of students. Because of COVID, things were delayed, and we didn't have those set up for K through three. So the next survey we do, I will also be sending it to our kindergartens and third graders and reminding parents to help their children fill out the survey. Mr. Marriott volunteered to conduct a qualitative analysis of the survey. I love when we have people doing their admin internships for us because they, they, they offer to do things, and then, and then, but I will be honest with you, as much as I joke, Kevin jumped right in, he was excited to do it, which is there, and he is going to give a summary of just the parent and guardian surveys, not the, not the teachers, faculty, and not the students, but just a focus in on our, our students, oh, sorry, our parent and guardian survey. And so I also wanted to say to the board, while Kevin did this work, I then invited him to, to present to the board because he really fully worked with me, and I support everything he's got in here, he did a great job, but I also think it's important to get some FaceTime and present the work that he did. And if you notice anybody taking pictures, I think he needs evidence for his admin program, so, so we might get some pictures of him doing this. Sorry, Kevin. All you.
Sounds great. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me to show some face, even though it might only be half of my face. It is a pleasure, really, to be here with all of you, and I do want to say again, thank you, Dr. Putnam, for giving me this chance to, to learn through an opportunity like this. I really do consider myself privileged to work in a district that really values its employees and gives these opportunities for growth as we work towards our collective goals for our students. So thank you again. And no, Dr. Putnam did not pay me to say those nice things about you. Before I begin with this, I would like to preface just the importance of when we have qualitative data and so many survey responses. It is so important to have a growth mindset. There were a ton of positive responses, which I thought was fantastic, but we do want to look at those constructive ones to see how we can be the very best that we can be for our students. The first slide you're going to see is a quote that I believe that came from an Indian Landing parent that I feel like really encompasses a lot of this year so far. It says, "To no fault of the district, it's just hard. The amount of online instruction is limited. The teachers are mostly great and keep the kids engaged, but our student misses in-person class and wishes she could go full-time. We would if we could, so there is a feeling of wanting more, but we are impressed with how hard the district and teachers and administrators have worked, and we are grateful." Everyone is working as hard as they can, all of our stakeholders, families, students, teachers, administration, and it's really important to keep that mind with this growth mindset of what we can do for our virtual instruction to improve. And when I reflect on the Penfield mission and vision, our core beliefs, for example, that all students belong to all of us, that we treat each other with dignity and respect, and I consider our initiatives like social-emotional learning, a lot of these words came up within a lot of the qualitative responses, which really showed me that, for example, social-emotional learning is a very clear initiative, not just for us here at, at PHS or in our buildings, but for families, too, and I think that was really great. So taking a look at the analysis of the qualitative responses from the family survey, like Dr. Putnam mentioned, that I would be discussing this evening. This is a chart, and the question here says, "How would you rate your child's overall experience with in-person instruction so far this school year?" As you can see, looking at the chart, the overwhelming responses say good and excellent. Again, this is for in-person instruction. The next one goes towards virtual instruction. You can see in this chart that there are still majority good, satisfactory, there are several excellent responses for virtual instruction, but you can note that there are more that reported somewhat unsatisfactory or unsatisfactory, which suggests to me that there are some areas that we can improve on. that there are some areas that we can improve on. So, going through this data, I analyzed the trends. What were the common things that were coming up? And I really started by just reading. The survey asked several questions, but it did ask to explain the overall experience with virtual instruction and to describe the overall virtual workload. It also provided opportunities for positive experiences, challenges, and any other comments that were necessary. We received from families a total of 2,435 surveys, which again, I think really speaks to that strong partnership we have with our families and I'm very proud to work in a district that is so. You can see in the bottom of the slide, there are three terms in red. These were some of the most common trends that came up amongst surveys from our families. Virtual learning, a lot of reference to the Wednesdays, technology and engagement and support. And like I mentioned before, there were a lot of surveys that mentioned that social emotional learning, which I thought was really great and spoke to the effectiveness of our implementation of that initiative. So, you're going to see, starting with Penfield High School, we'll break it down a little bit and then it's going to lead to Bay Trail and then our elementary schools. You'll notice on the left side, I included a couple of quotes, both positive and constructive. And then on the right side, I broke down a little bit more of what the data suggested. It says, "I see a better experience than we saw in the spring. It is probably about as good as can be expected in this environment. However, the online portion of school is still a difficult transition." When we consider virtual learning, many stakeholders said that their overall experience was good. It was satisfactory. However, some did advocate for more synchronous instruction, some did advocate for more direct instruction. When we consider technology, many stakeholders, I mean, as we learned at the beginning of this meeting too, sometimes technology doesn't work for us, but we do as best we can. Many did note the improvement with technology use as the year has continued, which is great. However, still hoping for some more consistencies, particularly with deadlines. And in regards to engagement and support, many families brought up that social and emotional learning and how crucial that was, even having those two in-person days, to have the peer-to-peer connections and the teacher-to-student connections. Looking at Bay Trail and some of the data that we analyzed from the middle school, it says, "My daughter was able to meet a new friend through 100% virtual and they video chat each other outside of school. I did not think that was possible." I thought that was really great. That was one of those unintended outcomes that there are positives even through all of this and it can be hard to see those positives sometimes. Constructively, students are expected to continue on learning and teaching themselves new material from a video or a computer screen. Most students do not learn that way. The support is not there. He has to teach himself new concepts. And I know even for me, when I'm working from home and I'm on my computer, it's hard for me. So, to expect our students to do it, it's a lot to ask and we need to have as many supports in place that are available. So, considering the virtual learning, stakeholders had various responses, but many indicated that there was a need for a little bit more guidance with virtual instruction. In regards to technology, similar to Penfield High School, the desire to see more consistency in technology use, but across the board, stakeholders did note that there is an improvement since the beginning of the year. And in regards to engagement and support, many families reported that the interactions were the best part of getting back to school, even in a hybrid model. And when we look at Cobble's, Harris Hill, Indian Landing and Scribner Elementary Schools, the quote says, "Everyone is working very hard to help make this a good learning experience for kids. Not ideal to learn kindergarten topics remotely, so I can't say excellent, but great considering the restraints." It also says, "It is very hard for my child to stay focused during virtual class and I have to closely monitor him to ensure his participation." Considering the virtual learning, there were a lot of positive responses, but many families at the elementary level did report a desire for a little more structure. It's hard to maintain when there's specific times throughout the day for a synchronous class and then kids are at home and each day might look different. It's hard to get a routine that really works for the individual, for the family, for the kid. Technology, technology use, especially for our youngest learners, can be difficult. I know that the 21st century learner picks up on things quickly, but it's a lot to ask for an elementary school student to be typing, to be learning to read and write as well. And as far as engagement and support goes, that social emotional connection and how important it was in learning really came through. So, these were a lot of the findings that I had through this qualitative analysis. Again, Dr. Putnam, thank you so much. I really feel like I learned a lot just about Penfield. I learned a lot about how to approach qualitative surveys and analysis and I'm very grateful for the opportunity. So, thank you. Are there any questions?
Word, any questions? You know, he is being, this is part of his program, so feel free to ask him as many questions as you can think of. Don't let him get off easy.
Can I think of a hard question?
All right, hard questions.
I'll think of a hard question. Okay, here's my hard question. When you're taking the responses from the open-ended questions, are you doing analysis on them, like encoding them into categories? So, we'll be able to, you know, when teams are diving into this, they'll be able to look at the numbers and...
Right, right. And what I realized by starting with so many surveys was the best thing to do was just to start reading.
Right.
And then to develop a plan because I was naturally curious. I wanted to see what the results would yield. And then like you said, Excel became a very good friend of mine. Color coding was great. And I realized that there was a lot of overlap because while I could search for one word specifically, maybe social emotional learning that came up a lot, many individuals said SEL, many said caring, many said love. So, it began just by reading to see, okay, all of these can kind of be lumped together in one group and that can be a challenge with analyzing qualitative data, but that was the approach that I had taken.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So, you've gone through this, you also went through the other survey data as well, correct?
Correct.
So, you've gone through those all in great detail. What advice would you have for Dr. Putnam?
It's a good question.
That's a great question. Dr. Putnam, why did you trust me going through this data? No, truthfully, I can't think of any questions right now.
I think, you know, I've gone through the survey data as well, as it came in in real time and then afterwards and while Kevin was working on it. You know, one of the things I'll tell you, and this is tough, is when we start looking at qualitative analysis, you know, we get more information, we get more detail than just multiple choice or dropdown menu of options. The hard part is, it would be really easy if all the feedback came back the same exact way. So, you know, as we look at this, we've got work to do because there are outliers on both sides. There are going to be families, students and teachers who really like what we have and it works for them. And we're going to have families and teachers and students who absolutely do not like the current program. And then it's really trying to find that middle to say, what can we do to make sure we're supporting people the best we can? A survey like this outside of COVID would still not result in 100% of people saying that they are satisfied or highly satisfied. We'd still have people, we know that. We're a large public school district. We don't always meet the needs, but we try in individual situations to build capacity to support all students. So, as we really dig into this as leadership teams, this will go out to building principals and administrators tomorrow morning and then to all staff by the end of the week and to all families. We'll share this PowerPoint out so, because that's the question, if people want to see it. It really is, how can we start really looking at our current program and what modifications and shifts we can make? But I want to be fair and open that it's not going to be, we're going to abandon everything we've done and try to start from scratch because we'll always be trying to patch holes in the boat and we'll never actually move that far. So, I think that Kevin's work was really incredible. This is a painstaking process to really go through and do qualitative analysis. I did not, I'm going to be very honest, I did not expect to get what we got from Kevin. The work that he put into this is really incredible, which is why I really wanted him here to present that work and be proud of it. So, that's my long answer, but while Kevin may not have questions for me or a direction for me, he'll be part of this process moving forward in regards to what can we do and what can we share to make sure we're trying the best we can to meet the needs of students, families and our staff. And that is a reminder, I didn't want Kevin here presenting on the staff yet because I wanted them to see the survey first, but it's fair and I just need to say is that our staff is working overtime. When I say that, they are burning the candle at both ends and my line is they've fully thrown it into the fire. I mean, this is not business as usual and it is exhausting. And so, when we talk about SEL, the social emotional needs of our students, we don't ever want to come across that we're forgetting for our staff too. It is different for everybody. So, we just appreciate the community knowing that, no, this is not what we want. If we could do five days a week, full-time school, we would be doing it. We can't based on the guidance the state has given us. So, until something changes, we're going to keep making modifications and work through. And I would just share with parents is that if you have individual concerns, the survey's great, it's anonymous, make sure you pick up the phone and call the teacher or the principal to walk through what you can do to help your individual student with support. But Kevin, great job. Thank you.
Thank you and thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
I have a quick comment, Mark.
Oh, go ahead, Catherine.
Did you put the presentation together for tonight?
I did.
Because I really think it was very sharp looking. It was easy to follow, easy to read and all those Penfield colors and I happen to appreciate that.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that feedback.
Yeah.
Great.
Great.
Buenas noches.
I was waiting, I was wondering how long we were going to get without Spanish. Kevin is an incredible Spanish teacher as well, so thank you.
Thank you.
Um...
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So, are we, I'm sorry, did I need to do that? Can I ask a question before we move on from the survey stuff? I didn't mean to like talk over you. I apologize. Are we going to have the survey data to look at for, I'm just curious about if there's similar themes with student data and teacher data in this?
The summary slides, like this? Yes. So, I will be able to share that with the board and the community as a whole. And as you know, I will, when I send an email, I send it to the board as well. I try to do it ahead of time. Sometimes it's right after I send it, but absolutely. Kevin is finalizing those same slides for the student data and for our teacher data.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
You think that I'm over, but I'm not. It was just a segue. We're still going. So, sort of next steps with survey, and this maybe answers a little bit where Lisa was going, is that we do need to do further analysis of all three surveys. We will be doing an internal review and discussions of possible instructional modifications within our current programming. I want to be transparent because it doesn't mean that we can start from scratch, but you know, what can we do to shift and make minor shifts to support the feedback we receive from all three stakeholder groups? And then we will, this is not the end of surveys. We will be continuing to, we do have a couple of other surveys in the works for, as we move towards second semester. Because what we've said in this district, like the vast majority of districts, is that at, before second semester, we will give families an opportunity to determine whether they want to stay in virtual or hybrid or shift to the other. We will talk more about that as it gets closer, but please remember for the community and for the board is that any major shifts from hybrid to virtual or virtual to hybrid have staffing impacts. You know, we don't have 15 teachers waiting to be put in. We don't have, we don't have like a bench of people waiting to go in. They're all teaching. So, if we have, you know, three times as many students want to go virtual, that's going to impact the teachers currently teaching hybrid, which means there's going to be a mid-year shift of who your teacher is. That's the only way to do it. And so, if we have major shifts, it just means we realize that we're going to also have major shifts in staffing, very unique. Usually in Penfield, you get a teacher and you have that teacher from September to June unless there may be a leave of absence or a change, but that's not really, you know, typically, this year's not typical in lots of reasons. So, we will communicate that with the families as we start to do those surveys and it really falls back on, I can't tell people unfortunately, exactly what things are going to look like second semester until we know how many people want virtual and how many people want hybrid. That's the hardest part because as a father as well, I want to know exactly what the programs are going to look like. We can't build it unless we know how many students to build it for. It is frustrating, but I just got off the phone today with four superintendents, it's the same process. We're all starting to build again on how do we do this? It'll be a sort of a repeat of summer and a little bit of the staff, the staff exhaustion on trying to build things for a very unique year. So, more to come, but I appreciate Kevin and we'll definitely get all the survey summaries out, especially to the board, but to the community as well. Oh, yeah.
I don't know if you're moving, are you still on the slide or are you going to move off it?
I was going to move off it, but I'm having...
Okay, so, can you speak more about the surveys for the second semester, what your plans are?
Sure. So, as we get closer, we'll do a, part of that survey is collection of families that want to move to second, like what do they, what's their choice for second semester? We're looking right now at a preliminary survey like we did this summer to just get an idea if we have a huge shift in thinking. And then, when we're looking probably right before Thanksgiving, that timeline isn't set yet, is asking people to confirm what program they want for their child for second semester, virtual or hybrid.
And I guess, and I wasn't clear, as far as, you know, looking at the same kind of data, doing the same kind of survey in the second semester?
Yes. Yeah, yeah. As we go into second semester, whatever that program looks like, asking people about their feedback on the instructional program?
Correct.
So, just shifting off instructional surveys to talk about everybody's favorite topic, COVID. Just want to be, trying to be as transparent and clear. Since our last board meeting, we did have, we reported the first instance of a staff member testing positive for COVID. It was a PHS staff member. That email went out to the community. We're very open about that. I just wanted to share is that the Monroe County Department of Health protocols worked exactly like they should have. So, also, it's working for students and it works for adults too. So, we get a phone call immediately. We know who the individual is, how long the quarantine is going to be, and then they follow up with contact tracing. And it is, I can't believe I have to say this is as a positive, I would have never thought these words would come out of my mouth, but masking works. Six-footed distance in our schools work because this is now, you know, not the first COVID positive we've had, but the Department of Health continues to say that it doesn't link back to any other staff member or any other student. They were not considered contact tracing. We didn't get any additional positives because of this positive because of what we're doing in the building. So, the fact that at six feet distance and masking, our cleaning protocols, our students who are absolutely amazing from kindergarten to 12th grade, wearing their masks, following the rules, that really is pretty amazing. So, we'll continue to update our community via emails when and if we have any future COVID positives that come back that we confirm through the Department of Health. Continuing on with this is just, is my reminder now, we're heading into, we're halfway through October. It's just really important to remember for all of us, including not just our schools but our community, please remember to maintain the six-feet-a-distance, wearing appropriate face masks, frequent hand washing, answering our daily COVID questions for our students and staff, and please stay informed, remain positive. I am absolutely amazed and I tell you, as you've talked to teachers and students, you know, that, we haven't changed. It's still Penfield, it's still Team Penfield, it's still Penfield strong. And if you walk into the building, even though kids are wearing masks, I'm telling you, you forget all about it because they're having fun, they're being kids, they're learning. And if you're online watching those faces, they are, they are staying positive. So, for the community as well, please help us stay positive. So, here's a positive. We started the school year without allowing any playground use. We were one of the only districts to do this. We decided, and I will, I'll take credit in the sense of I'm really precautious, so I really wanted to make sure that we took our time. We are now ready, after careful review and consideration, to open our K-5 playgrounds with COVID precautions that are happening in other areas and are based on the New York State and Monroe County Department of Health playground precautions. Yes, the state has precautions for playgrounds. So, students must wear their mask at all times, students must maintain social distancing of six feet, students must stay with their class, that's for cohorting. And then students will be required to use hand sanitizer before going out to play and before coming back. And I will be honest, I added this last rule, we're not really going to share this rule, but I think students are going to be required to have fun and act like kids. And so, I do believe that will happen on the playground. We already have our playground monitors who've been trained on other games to play, so the playground will kind of become a station. So, as... so the playground will kind of become a station. So our elementary principals I met with today, they're going to use that as sort of a station. So one class will go on the playground while the other kids are on the blacktop or doing a game with the playground monitor, and then they'll sort of shift through. If families, an email will go out from each principal tomorrow explaining the rules for the playground use, and if parents have any concerns or questions, who to reach out to. But it is a positive. I think I do have a couple people in the community who email me regularly about playgrounds, so I'm happy to say we're going to open them back up. I'm going to shift a little bit of this, but it's just as critically important is our equity and access. And so I just wanted to remind the community and speak on behalf of the district that we do have the following core beliefs that are listed on our webpage under our mission and vision, and that they are that all students have the inherent desire and capacity to develop their unique potentials. Providing the leadership and resources for the learning is a shared responsibility of families, students, teachers, and the community. We believe in Penfield that learning happens best in a safe environment, which respects the individual, values diversity, encourages effort. And we believe that learning results from engagement in relevant, purposeful activities, that learning occurs is more important than when it occurs. And I share this because I want to be really clear, and while I've had individual conversations and some parent meetings, and we've met with the board and talked about this, and my team is aware, I want to be open to the full community that our district is committed to the critical work around equity and access for each and every student in Penfield. I also want to share that this isn't new work. Cultural responsiveness is a key component of social emotional learning. It's part of our five-year social emotional learning plan that Mr. Pfeiffer has talked about at past meetings. It's part of the Castle Framework and the work that came out of our social emotional learning audit by the Children's Institute a few years ago. And so this is just sort of a new, expanded commitment to this work. We're going to continue to listen to our stakeholders, make decisions in the best interest of all students. And really where we're focusing as we dig into this is around four essential areas. Our curriculum, which would include textbooks and novels in the ELA department and resources, our professional development and training, our recruitment, hiring, and retention, and our district policy, which is really where the Board of Education is going to play a major role, which would include our code of conduct that the policy committee has been working on for a little over a year to really take a shift and look at really restorative practices within our code of conduct. And so this work we're going to continue to dig into. And I've talked about this with the board and some community groups that want to be open at a board meeting, is that this district, over the last six, seven years and probably before, we've effectively utilized external audits to determine areas of improvement and prioritize timely action items. I'm not talking about, Ray, who was here earlier, talking about our financial audits. Of course we do those every year, and we talk about that, and it's the same concept, but we've used that external audit besides just finances around other things we do in our district. So not that long ago, we did a social emotional learning audit, and we worked with the Children's Institute. They came in, they did stakeholder feedback groups with, oh, sorry, feedback groups with multiple stakeholders, took all that data, went through it, and came back with really a plan for us to dig into, to say, how can we ensure that social emotional learning is really a key component of our district? After Parkland and the tragedy that happened there, we heard from lots of family members on security, lots of teachers and lots of students. And so we worked with an outside organization, Armada, who came in and did a full-blown security audit, and they did stakeholder feedback through surveys to faculty and to parents, and they did small stakeholder meetings as well. And they came back, you've heard from Alan McNiff and Brandon Fox in the past, on all of the priorities, short-term and long-term, that we had to put into play in order to support the security work in a clear and effective manner. So we're now in our district currently discussing doing the same process with an equity audit. There are some amazing outside organizations that do serve the purpose of coming in and doing a full audit of what we currently do, curriculum, professional development, policies, and our hiring and recruitment practices. And so looking and bringing somebody in, to my term, without the rose-colored glasses, without really inside knowledge, but an outsider's view to say, how does that work? What are you doing that's working well? What can you do to make it better? And so we are going to hopefully be able to announce, you know, who's going to do the equity audit. We're currently working on that internally now and seeing really what would be the best fit for our district. And then just in closing, is just a reminder, an email went out to the board, to the entire Penfield staff, and to the entire Penfield school community of families, that we're in partnership with the United Way of Greater Rochester. They're doing a 21-day racial equity challenge. It runs, it starts up this week, October 23rd, and runs through November 20th. It's 100% free to sign up. They say you need probably about 15 to 20 minutes a day. It'll be sent to you via an email. You can go to UW, United Way, Rochester.org to sign up and just click on Learn More About the Challenge. You can put down Pennfield Central School District if you want to, say you're with an organization. And we're encouraging everybody in our entire extended community to join us on this journey and learn, and be open to learning, and look at racial equity both here in Rochester and outside of Rochester, but really dig in and learn and be ready to have these conversations as we continue to work. And that is, that's the end of my slides, unless there's any questions.
All right, you want to say, board, any questions? Catherine?
Tom, first on the, this, how we're going forward with virtual learning. I think in the beginning of the school year, didn't the governor give an tentative date when he was going to announce what we're doing after, was it the first of the year, or was it after a certain amount of time, or did that not even happen?
This is why I look at Dan and go, Dan or Jim or Barb?
I know that that did occur last year, you know, where there was a timeframe of when certain things were going to happen and leading up to the school year, but I haven't heard anything about any decisions for later this school year or anything to this point.
Okay.
It's really based on, I believe, that the data and the numbers of cases within each region or community.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then one more quick question. It's actually a comment about Simon. I don't know, did you notice that he's wearing a little Bills?
Yes, the Buffalo Bills, Simon jersey.
Like if the guy, if, the guy, if Simon was cool to begin with, then I, because right after we left the slide, I'm like, oh my God, he's wearing a little Bills. I just thought it was really cute. So I thought I would wait until this moment in the meeting to bring that one up, because, you know.
If you're on Twitter, I will just share that Simon does have his own, it's called Simon Says, his own Twitter account, so you can follow Simon. So he gives really good pointers around social emotional learning and things that we can all do to make sure we're being safe.
Well, seriously, you know, I do, I make light, you know, because he's a cute little animal, and I just think he's absolutely adorable. But I feel like his role is so important, especially now. So I'm so glad he's back. I really am. But I just had to, I just had to point that out.
Lisa?
I have one quick question and one comment. Are the grounds, the grounds were closed for COVID, the playgrounds, like, you know, after school, are families now on playgrounds, like on weekends, or is that now closed?
Yes. Yeah, so the question is, during the emergency shutdown, we did close playgrounds. You know, we did not, we did not wrap them in bubble tape or anything like that, but we did share with the community that they were closed, including our basketball courts, everything. You know, we did work with, in partnership with the Monroe County Sheriff, who patrolled our grounds a bit. I will be honest with you, as I always am, is that even though our playgrounds are closed during the school day, we still know that we have families who live within our communities and come down and play in the playgrounds after school. And so we are, our playgrounds are now open officially, officially open during the day with all of those rules and requirements. And then after school, we do know that we are a community playground for most of our elementary schools, because there's houses everywhere.
Yeah, no, that's great. Thank you. I also quickly wanted to give another plug for this 21-day Equity Challenge. I happen to, Evan Dawson had a group on today, and it was just really, it made me really excited about it. He had a panel on, and they said they partnered with 50 different organizations. There's going to be a local lens to it, and I just, I just thought that was really cool, and it's going to be really short. They said like 10 or 15 minutes a day, so there's my extra plug for you and the community.
I think it's great. The feedback we've received from staff, just a lot of thank yous for partnering with it, and many had already signed up because they had heard about it. There's been some press around the 21-day racial equity challenge. But, you know, we're, you know, in order to start this work, we've got to be upfront, honest, and know that we are all learning in this. There's no, you know, we're all becoming, I think, focused on this work, understanding what we can do is different, and know that we've got to lean on each other, because I don't think anybody's an expert on the best way to make sure that we're supporting all students through this work. So I appreciate any extra plug for the 21-day Equity Challenge. And our logo is now on their website, which is really cool, so.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Board, any other questions for Tom?
All right, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Pfeiffer, who's just going to talk a little bit about our superintendent's conference day.
Thank you, Dr. Putnam. I think it's important to start with the fact that much like when we did our social emotional learning audit, we didn't wait to do that audit, we didn't wait for the results of that audit, to swing into action and start doing something. If we wait until everything's perfect and planned, we'll never get anywhere, right? And so, you know, we started working, as Dr. Putnam mentioned, on issues of equity as part of the Social Emotional Health and Well-Being Action Plan last year and the year before, but certainly continued that with our conference day on Friday, October 9th. And that was in the form of Distinctions of Equity Professional Development Opportunity that took place during each building faculty meeting during the morning of that day. It's the same professional development that the board engaged in, facilitated by Mrs. Sheena Conway at the workshop on the 6th, just before that. And really, the focus of this was really to start to lay a baseline, a foundational understanding of the differences between multicultural education, social justice education, and culturally responsive education. I think I was able to sit in at one of the buildings. The administrators did a nice job. The faculty was participating and engaged. And what Sheena Conway's been kind of inundated with since those faculty meetings took place was, that was great. I have a little bit of an understanding. I have a taste of what culturally responsive education is. Now how do I do it? And so she's planning next steps, including book studies and professional learning circles to help staff who are ready to really dig in and start taking those next steps, get a jump on it, while we're working on what does it look like more holistically at the district level. So it was great that the board had the opportunity to participate in a learning opportunity that was the same as the teachers were participating in on our conference day. In addition to that, we also had an implicit bias presentation by Dr. Jason Willis for all of our clerical staff, which really, the goal of that was to really just help our clerical staff understand what implicit bias is, what it might look like, and some tips on how to maybe counteract that in their roles as clerical folks. We also had Chris Merle here, who did some, two sessions on adult self-care for our staff, because as we've mentioned, that's very important. We need to be helping people take care of themselves so that they can give the best of themselves to our students. And then we had a variety of sessions on instructional technologies and resources, including Teams, OneNote, Forms, NearPod, Superkids, AmesWeb, NWA Map Accelerator, which is an online assessment tool. These were facilitated by members of the Office of Curriculum and Instruction, as well as some teachers who volunteered to present, and really offer small one-hour sessions to help teachers, again, advance their capacity with the technology tools and continue to get better. I think it's important to note that while we had the specific superintendent's conference day, these same types of mini-sessions are occurring every Wednesday. Teachers are stepping up and offering small one-hour, half-hour professional development sessions on our Wednesdays for teachers to engage in and continue to build their capacity as we integrate technology and teach in a very different environment than we ever had before. In terms of feedback about the day, typically I'm able to say that we get about a 30% or 40% response rate to our surveys. That wasn't the case this year. We only had about 153 responses to the surveys requesting feedback on the day. And to say, I think we still did pretty well, it was a 3.9 out of five overall stars, so, you know, small sample size. But, you know, folks appreciated the opportunity. They appreciated the time. We were very responsive to what they need and tried to offer things that we knew staff needed on that day. But most of all, they continue to need that time because they didn't have their typical Wednesday planning and collaboration time, because they're still adjusting to this new model. So they appreciated the time a lot, too. Any questions?
Board, any questions for Jim? Well, thank you, Jim.
Thank you, and thanks to the team. They did an outstanding job putting together a great day.
Hey, I agree, and that where I get to say, that concludes superintendent reports.
Okay. We are now on section 5A, which is the change orders for facilities. It is recommended that the board approve the following change orders that you see in your agenda as described. May have a motion and a second that the change orders be described, be, as described, be approved.
So moved. Second.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion carries. 6A, the audit report. So the recommended action is that the audit report for the year ending June 30th be accepted. The annual audit report and audit management letter is prepared for the Board of Education by Mengel Metzer Barr and Company, LLP, Raymond Wagner. The corrective action plans, as you see below, were reviewed by the Audit Committee on its October 15, 2020 meeting, and is provided to the entire board for its review. The audit statements, the audit contains statements for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020. The report is a positive one and includes the opinion that the financial statements fairly represent the financial position of the district. The audit discloses no conditions that the auditors believe to be a significant deficiency. The audit did identify areas that could be strengthened, and the recommendations made by the auditor and our plan, and our plan to adjust them are listed below. You did have the opportunity to hear the report and ask questions of Dr., of Mr. Wagner. At this point, a motion would be ordered, and a second would be in order, that the audit by Mengel Metzer Barr and Company, LLP, Raymond Wagner, CPA, PC Division of the district's basic financial statement, and the associated management letter for the year ending, ended June 30th, 2020, be accepted. May have a motion and a second.
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Along with the audit, it is recommended the Audit Committee Charter be approved, def-submitted. Per the Commission's regulations, it is necessary to re-adopt the Penfield Audit Committee Charter every year. The charter was adopted by the committee at their October 15, 2020 meeting. The charter was given to the Board of Education prior to this meeting for review. May have a sec, a motion and a second, that the Penfield Audit Committee Charter be approved as submitted.
So moved. Second.
Second, all right. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Policies for First Read. The, and these policies you have in your agenda are 6140 health examinations, 6151 drug-free workplace, and 6211 recruitment. Would someone on the Policy Committee like to make any comments on this?
I'd be happy to. I'd be happy to speak on behalf of our incredible Policy Committee. These, all three of these are part of our five-year review that the board has talked about. We are a little behind because of the emergency closures with COVID, but we are committed to getting back on track and making sure that we can complete in five years. Can you believe, I think this is like our fourth year of the, maybe third or fourth year of a five-year review. Pretty impressed. So 6140 is health examinations. It's just a minor edit. We added his or her designee, and this is around our district physician, or his or her designee around certain areas, around the requirement of health examinations. Drug-free workplace, again, some minor edits to sentence structure, eliminate wordiness. No change. We are still a drug-free workplace. And recruitment is the biggest change. Recruitment is a policy that was three sentences, just that we would recruit and try to find the best, the best people. The Policy Committee wanted to go further with this, with the work we're doing around equity and diversity. And there, I would encourage folks to take a look at that. The policy is updated, really around the fact that in Penfield, we're committed to having our workforce resemble our student population. And so the board directs the superintendent or- directs the superintendent, or his or her designee, to have a, to work towards having our candidate pools be as diverse as possible. And so we know we've got a lot of work to do around this, but I just think it's a great first step, and I appreciate the Policy Committee being committed to this, to put some of this work in, in writing through policy. And those are our three first-read policies.
Fantastic, and very timely, certainly very timely. We'll review those again at the next board meeting. So at this board meeting, now we're to the second reading and approval, and it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the following policies. Did we get any questions or comments? I guess I'll read them first. 6122, complaints and grievances by employees. 6123, non-discrimination and anti-harassment in the district. Did we get any comments?
We got no comments.
Nope.
Okay.
All right, so may I have a motion and a second that the above policies be approved as presented?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Monroe County, now the Monroe County Committee meetings, the board participates in a number of the committee meetings. There were three over the past, since the last meeting, the first one being the Legislative Committee, which was attended by Catherine Dean and myself. Catherine, would you like to make some comments, and then I'll follow up?
So, our meeting was kind of short this past time because the regents are coming to our next meeting. And so we had a discussion about what we may be talking to them about when they, when they come. And that is a meeting that everyone's invited to if, if you want to come to it. But we need to know for space reasons. So if you have an interest in coming to that particular meeting, which is, it's the first Wednesday, hold on, the first Wednesday in November.
Correct.
And, you know, at Doubletree at noon, and that's a lunch meeting, and so, you know, we would need to know if you want to eat and if you want to see. Okay, so there's that. We also talked about the resolutions, but Bill sent us a report on the resolutions, so we kind of went over that. I mean, Mark, if you want to extrapolate on that, but it's, it's really kind of redundant to the board. And we have a couple of position papers that we're working on that are going to be going to the Steering Committee, and when that has happened, then we can make those available. Impact on staff shortages on the school districts, the role of regents in SED for public education, the bus driver shortage. I thought there were four, but I only see three here.
Yeah, there were. I didn't quite hear, but I heard staff shortages, bus drivers, the role of regents, and the State Education Department. I don't know if you, if you said that or not. And then the schools, safe and secure.
Yes, yes. I don't see that one, but yes, I do recall it. So that's what I had, Mark, unless you want to add anything else?
I think you covered everything. Like I say, I have, there is the resolutions, and we'll, we'll cover that in a moment with Bill. But that's, that's pretty much what we had. I think the next meeting will be, will be very interesting to have. And I, you know, everyone's always welcome to join us there. I think this one will be worth going to. Next was the Executive Committee, which is the Executive Committee for the Monroe County School Board Association. I'm going to go to Tom, see if he recalls anything.
Sure. It's the first time we've met in person in a long time.
Yes.
And we were in Penfield, which is always nice to be local. We did have an update from Sherri Johnson, just around budget, and, you know, things are good for Monroe County School Boards. They worked hard over last year with the closing to, to have a very easy framework for how the dues are due, for what each district pays into the Monroe County School Board Association, which is, for some history, has always been, has always caused lots of questions. It wasn't a very clear process. It now is. And then the other piece is, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna slip, but the new president this year is from the Pittsburgh Board, and I feel terrible, I'm just.
Amy.
Amy, from the Pittsburgh Board is the new president. She outlined her goals for this year, and I think did a very nice job. And they are working through those goals, focused really on bringing folks together and trying to work as a team like we always have done with Monroe County School Board. So I think those are the things that hit the top of my, my head.
Very good. Thank you. And then the last, let's see here, I'll go back to this. Information Exchange. Any, Emily or?
Well, I will speak on that. I was not able to attend, but we did get the meeting minutes. And it was, the presentation was on reopening schools with mental health and equity in mind. The presenter was from Rush Henrietta, and she was presenting on what Rush Henrietta did to reopen the schools, what their focus was, and how they were responding to trauma with regards to the pandemic and the state of the nation, I guess you could say, with regards to parents, students, and staff. And it is, it was taped, and it is online. I don't know where, but it is online.
I think they're all taped.
Are they, are they all taped now?
Labor Relations was taped.
Okay.
And internally, at the, within the District Committee meetings, with the Audit Committee, we went through the audit reviews. Was there any other comments? I think we pretty much covered that earlier. Any other comments from the Audit Committee?
Just that, I think a great deal of gratitude is for those who built a strong foundation for us at this time to weather this storm that we're weathering financially. A lot of work was put in beforehand to make this a solid foundation. That's what I got out of the Audit Committee.
Good. Thank you. And then Health and Safety Committee, Emily.
That would be me again.
That would be Bells.
So Alan McNiff gave an update on construction. And as we went on the board tours, we saw some of the updates. The nurses reported on COVID and the need for documentation within 48 hours, or the county deems this person positive. And each school submits any kids that are sent home to the state. The Health Department came and inspected every building, food service. There was a district-wide, or district-wide and building-level emergency response plans were resubmitted to the state. COVID again, disinfecting is being taken place each evening between student cohort groups, lead water sampling. They're suspending testing until June of 2021. I know there was something about that. And the building condition survey, which is normally every five years, but then now they have annual visual inspections, and, which is every year for the next two years. And then the next building condition survey is going to be in 2022.
Wow.
Because we're busy.
Yeah.
And then we had the school tours. We tour all the facilities every year. This year's especially important because of all the construction projects going on, the capital projects. On October 9th, we visited Cabo's, the high school, and the bus garage, which is, anyone have any thoughts or comments they want to mention about those tours?
I can just share that it's the first time that I think every board member could attend those tours, which is pretty cool.
And, and, you know, this is during the day, so.
Absolutely, typical.
Everyone has to make arrangements during the day to attend, so that.
Right. And Mark, we got to wear our hard hats at Cabo's.
Our hats, yours.
Yeah. A little hard hat?
Yeah.
Please remember that, that we are, you know, for those upcoming tours on October 22nd, is, please remember to bring your hard hat, because we are going to Indian Landing. So there's some construction.
And your shoes. No flip flops.
Oh, yeah.
No hi-hat.
No hi-hat.
Oh, boy.
And then we're going to get to visit the sport dog.
Yeah, I think we'll probably see Simon. You know, let me put a call in, make sure that Simon is there.
Yes.
Thank you for reminding me.
Except I can't go to that one.
I don't think.
And just as a reminder, we do need to reschedule the Bay Trail and Scribner tours, and so we will get something out to the board and try to find a date to make sure that we get to Bay Trail and Scribner, because there's a lot of work going on at Scribner. I know Alan's excited, and I am too, and I know Dan is as well, to make sure you see that in action and what things are going to look like when they're complete.
Very good, very good. Now, shall we have new business, which is the Resolutions Report? Billy Jaeger's been our, been our representative on, for the resolutions this year, and.
Give you a quick summary. So the Area 2 Resolutions Meeting was held on the 3rd for, between 9:00 and, or 9:00 and 11:30. It was a beautiful day. Unfortunately, we had to meet virtually, as usual, so I didn't get that beautiful drive down to Cannondale. But I, there were 11 total delegates from all over Area 2. Sherri Johnson was obviously there, and John Daly, the New York State School Board Association rep, was there as well. And I'd like to just kind of quick give them a thanks for their, just a quick question answering and keeping us on track and making sure that it went smoothly. There were, there was one sunsetting resolution that pertained, that was interesting, that just pertained to state tests again, how to quickly get, you know, things like quickly getting evidence to teachers and making sure the tests are fair and equitable, and it's all that. And you'll notice that most of these resolutions were voted on, were pretty unanimous overall. The couple that were more debated or talked about, two really focused around special education, and really two pieces of that being, the districts being able to try to protect themselves from kind of overzealous lawsuits, but also making sure that parents don't feel deterred, deterred in going after what it is they think their kids might need for special education purposes. So there's a lot of discussion that revolved around that, and it was kind of a split decision with that. A couple other, really, a lot of the other resolutions that we discussed, some of them discussed really issues of whether or not the issues were unfunded mandates or not. There was one particular in there that kind of looks like an unfunded mandate. I think it was, maybe, let's see.
Was it the one around pilot program?
I think it was the one, Resolution 4.
Yeah.
Yeah, so Resolution 4 was just really whether or not we want to seat it at the table versus really mandating us to do anything, or an unfunded mandate. There were a couple revolving around equity in technology and equity in education that I think we'll see more of in the next couple of years. I think these resolutions like that are going to start to probably pop up more and more. And then I think outside of that, there was one specific one that was, that we discussed, that was a proposed but not recommended resolution that revolved around tenure. But a lot of that was, there was a lot of misunderstanding of the difference between certification, recertification, and tenure. So once that got kind of hammered out anyway, and people understood, I think it, you know, it didn't matter. It was, the fact that it was a non-recommended proposal was pretty understood and clear. The, there is, the, oops, I feel like I do this at school all the time, too. Oops. The, the, any resolutions or late resolutions need to be in, is by the 29th, and then of course, the October 31st Annual Business Meeting will be at 8:30 a.m., and I will be ready to go.
Thank you. Anyone have any comments on the resolutions?
I'm curious how you're feeling about voting on some of the controversial ones.
To me, they weren't controversial so much as it was, it was just really good discussion. Like really hearing what other people had to say kind of clarified some things, and I think for a lot of people, gave us time to just take a step back. As far as some of these more controversial ones, I think, the twos on special education, that seemed pretty, I'll, I mean, that seemed pretty divided.
Pretty, I'm sorry, pretty.
That seemed pretty divided. Even, I mean, it's not, not just by the straw poll vote, but just the people who were on one side were clearly on one side, and the people who were on the other were clearly on the other. There was, that was where there was a little bit of concern, of where I wondered where that middle ground will end up being.
I think two and three, I'd have to go back and look at last year. So last year, there was a district that came to the meeting. Were you there, Bill, to observe? Do you remember? Like at the 11th hour, and had a really long, strong, like anti-special ed rights, because they were clearly having something going on in their district, and it got voted down.
It was this one, I think, because they mentioned that they had to pay to send a student out of state for services. Like, and so there was, you know, I think it was a, that was, like you said, I think that was a very specific reason.
Right. And so, I mean, that's the thing that gets concerning about, I mean, these should be global, first of all. And I think we need to think about, too, the purpose of a lot of special education law is to protect student rights from what could be deemed a large district with a lot of attorney and whatever. I'm not saying that that means people should take advantage of it, but I think that's the premise of a lot of that.
Yeah, and I felt like, you know, we want to encourage, particularly parents who might have all those, you know, the monetary facilities, whatever it is, to, to really, you know, I don't want to, we don't want to discourage people for fighting for their children's needs.
Right, right.
Certainly, that's not it. And, and that's where I would have fallen. But certainly, there is a, there may be a need to, to try to find a way to protect districts from, from just outrageous amounts of money, you know. But there's, both sides have legitimate concerns, but I think that there's a way to work to consensus there, or some sort of compromise that will benefit both. I think it exists.
Any other comments on the resolutions? I'm taking a minute here. All right. Thank you, Bill. And I would just, before we move to adjourn, I would just say thank you, Tom, for the recognition for the board, Board Week.
I appreciate that. Please note that's on behalf of everybody in the district. And as much as I know, this is probably going to shock you, I did not make those bulls with the ribbon. It really goes to Sharon Irkfits in the work that she does.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you, Sharon.
Well, and we owe Sharon, not just for the bulls, but for all that she does to help us as well. And I would just say that I've been on the board eight years. This is my eighth year, and it's, you know, we hear about other boards where, you know, the camaraderie is different than it is on our board. I think we have a very good camaraderie. We all bring special backgrounds and skills to the table, and we, we share them with each other. And I know I can lean on certain people when they have an expertise in an area I don't have. And we all have the same goal, without a doubt. I mean, people talk about hidden agendas and power trips, and that's just not the reality for our board. And I'm, and I'm very happy to be leading this board, and even when I'm, before I was leading a board, when Catherine was leading it, it's just a great board to be on. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
And with that, unless someone wants to make a comment, with that, I will have a motion and be in order to adjourn the meeting at 8:48 p.m. and it's, and of course, a second.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion adjourned. Meeting adjourned.